Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Mr. Willoughby.
Here.
Mr. Radel.
Here.
All present.
I'm Carrie, do you want to announce the executive session?
Yes, council was just engaged in an executive session concerning personnel matters.
Thank you. Any deletions? Your motion to adopt.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Extension, opposed, the agenda is adopted, we now have public comment on the agenda items only. I, I have two that are here that will be on agenda, anybody that wishes to speak on agenda. Well, let me check this. No, go ahead. I was gonna see if there was anybody on the Zoom, but.
Alright.
Admin with a hand up. Anybody on Zoom?
Yes.
Sure, please state your name and the municipality you reside in.
My name is Shannon Smith, I live in Dallas Township. And my comment, my comment I would like to make at the beginning of the meeting. The committee must be very particular and careful in this new county manager search. Not only that, but a thorough background check and work history must be completed and well analyzed and understood. A county manager should not be a political issue, but a professional managerial decision based on what is best for the whole county. The person selected must have a real understanding of their responsibilities and the real issues in rural charter works. The committee has to look at the greater good, the good of all the county residents. The person selected as the new county manager, besides what was stated before, must understand what good fiscal management is and where money really needs to be spent, such as fully funding the board of election to help avoid future chaos, the coroner's office, legal aid and such, and must understand the best ways to deal with the county's debt. In other words, it is the county's duty to handle this search in a correct and intelligent, nonpartisan manner, and that's what I request they do.
Thank you, any other members on the Zoom, I'll look like Mark Schaefer.
Hello, uh, yeah, I'd like to echo a lot of what the last speaker said.
Can you state the municipality you reside in?
Oh, sorry, well fair.
Thank you.
Hi, my, uh, I would like to echo a lot of what the last person said that, when hiring the county manager, we have to really make sure that we focus on someone with, experience and knowledge that is appropriate for the job. Unless make it, make it about like it was last time, not hiring a certain person because of their political involvement or whatever. Like, it should really be a focus on resume and qualifications. What we've seen in our county lately, the last few years, is a serious problem with understaffing and lack of experience. Institutional knowledge is incredibly important. And when we have the incredible turnover that we have in our county bureaus, it leads to the type of mistakes that we've seen and that everyone is upset about. So it's very important that we get someone that we know will be willing to stay for a while, someone who's not gonna leave every year. Someone who has experience showing that they're willing to stay in the job, whether it's someone who already works for the county or someone who lives elsewhere. Just someone that we can trust will work for the good of the common taxpayer for an extended period of time. We should make sure that we're not focusing on, woo, do they promise to do this or that political issue we're particularly concerned about, but rather make sure it's someone who really knows what they're doing. As we've seen with the election, as caller said, we have underfunded.
Agenda items only.
Okay, so yeah, so the hiring manager needs to make sure that it's someone who knows that they can appropriately from the department and are gonna do it without interference from the council or from political lobbies. And it needs to be someone with clear experience. I think you should make sure when you're setting up the hiring committee and the search committee, that it's bipartisan, that it's people from different experiences, private and public sector. All of that, really make sure that you're getting a diverse set of views and not just picking people who may agree with you on this or that issue, someone who's gonna.
Last December, this county council could not make the right decision. Uh, I was the only one who went on record as to not wanting to hire at the time, Mr. Robertson. He wasn't the right person for the job, I'm glad he resigned. I think everyone has learned a valuable lesson around making political hires. What Mr. Robertson did by resigning tonight, and his debacle with Ms. Gilbert McBride, hiring her with no previous election experience into the assistant election director's position, and then three months later, making her the director, interim director, was an absolute disgrace. And now we all sit here and wonder what the hell is going on. I was disenfranchised by what happened last week because I voted for certain people who were involved in three different counties for House of Representatives positions, and I don't know. And I don't know, correct, I don't know if my vote counted. So I want to thank Mr. Robertson for resigning because he really should be fired. And Mr. McGinnity, you know that. Some people that I would like to recommend for the search committee. There are a couple of people formerly on council I never met, maybe said hello to once or twice, but they were impressive people. Two people that come to mind, Harry Haas, Republican. One of the most intelligent people I've ever seen on council, he should be on the search committee. Linda Howke, Democrat. Honest. Honest person. Needs to be on the committee. They shouldn't be asked to apply, they should be asked to serve on the committee. Other people, common citizens such as Gray Griffin, Sam Troy. And lastly, I would say, why not, why not appoint someone like Mark Raybo, who has a wealth of experience, more, more knowledge than anyone on council about how government, municipal government works, would be a valuable asset to the search committee. If we looked at the last search committee, and also, I would like to ask that Rick Morelli not be considered. How many times, Rick, Rick Morelli's been on the, the search committee the last two times that you've had to search for a new manager. So please, let's, let's delete Rick Morelli's name from the list, thank you so much.
Any other members that we should speak on agenda items? If not, we'll belong, we have, uh, item number one, a motion to adopt resolution by Lutheran County Council, declaring intent to form a Lutheran County Manager's Committee, whoever makes the motion, please fill out the number. Fill in the number.
At least three people.
I'll second that.
At least three?
Comply, charter, charter requires three.
Yeah, the, the, the way that it's worded is to be made up of, at least three.
My choice would be three.
Alright.
I'll second, second, could I?
Second it for at least three?
For three, for three. So that there's no ambiguity.
Okay, motion for three people.
I'll second the change to three.
Second to three, roll call on adopting this with the three, three members.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnity.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Motion passes. Number two, we have a motion to adopt resolution accepting the resignation of Lutheran County Manager and appointing an acting county manager, please be mindful that this has some blanks to be filled in at law.
Show move.
With the blanks. No, you can make the motion resign.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Lutheran County Manager, Mr. Randy Robertson, and appoint an acting county manager in regards to the resignation of Mr. Robertson. We accept his resignation with his last day of employment being tomorrow, November eighteen, twenty twenty-two. And with the condition that the county will pay his remaining compensation as per, per his offer letter. Second.
Yeah, so we also need to fill in acting county manager and his rate. And effective date. So we have a motion with the last day being tomorrow, guidelines following the offer letter. This is all one, should we, can we do that first? Are we gonna have to do it all at once?
You could do it.
We do, we do one at a time, just finish one and then bring it up, we'll be in the same.
Okay, alright, let's, we have a, we have a motion in a second for that, can we take a roll call on that portion?
This is a collective date of eleven eighteen twenty-two with the compensation is for the offer letter.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnity.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes.
I make a motion for Brian Swett for acting manager, one fifty-seven.
Second.
Valerie. Valerie.
Effective date, ten?
Monday morning.
I would use Saturday.
So continuity.
So I'm sorry, I don't wanna ruin your motion, but I think maybe Saturday to be safe.
Oh, how about at the close of business Friday?
Okay.
November eighteen, okay, she has something a little bit different. I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Swett at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, effective close of business Friday, and we have a second, we do a roll call.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnity.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Okay, so this entire resolution had, do you have any one on the whole? Okay, just to be safe, on the entire resolution with a first portion and a second portion, you have a motion?
Motion. Oh, move, second.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. McDermott.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnity.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby.
Yes.
Mr. Venus.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo.
Yes.
Mr. Radel.
Yes. Okay, the entire resolution passes, we now have public comment. Yes.
Do you mind if I make a statement before we go into public comment? Okay, thank you, uh, sure. I haven't commented yet publicly on any of the election day problems, I'd like to just make the following statement. To say that the election day last week in Lutheran County was a fiasco is an understatement. In recent days, I've had people calling me from Maryland, Texas, California, and other states to personally insult me, criticize me, and criticize all of you. I got calls from the Philadelphia Inquirer, I got calls from USA Today, and we are truly, last week's election, we are truly the laughing stock of America. Having a widespread shortage of paper at the polling sites is unthinkable. The missteps which followed that day are inexcusable. Shredded ballots, double-sided printed ballots, lack of or no meaningful communication to the field, improperly trained poll workers, loss of chain of custody of the ballots. Voters told they cannot vote and turned away by the hundreds if not thousands. How on earth can anyone possibly certify these election results to be true and accurate? They cannot. All of this falls squarely on the lack of leadership. The level of ineptitude and incompetency has risen to a level never before seen in this county. Once again, the trust of the people has been crippled. Our county is in a world of hurt. The healing will not be quick nor easy. But the healing process must begin now. This healing cannot begin with the continuance of those leaders who were responsible. The people of Lutheran County will never trust them again, nor us. As you've all seen in emails, hundreds of emails. Therefore, I am asking for the immediate resignations of both Ms. Beth McBride and Ms. Denise Williams from the Election Bureau and Election Board respectively, and let this healing begin now. And I'd like to know, this is not a vote, how many of my colleagues agree with that statement?
Wait, we can't vote like that?
No, no vote. Whether you agree with that statement or not, it's not a vote, there's no motion on the floor.
Okay.
You can't see me, but my.
Mr. Thornton, I agree with a lot of what you said in this statement.
Okay.
There's some information that I'm still waiting for and hope everybody's waiting for in order to make a, a good decision. One of the things we've done here recently is move too quickly on some of these decisions. I don't wanna go through and do it quickly, I wanna do it right the first time, and I want to move on from that. So.
Okay.
You know, that's my stance, I certainly agree that the election itself was certainly debacle, I think is the word to use.
Fiasco.
Okay, I can agree with that too.
And debacle.
I think we'll see a lot of items on work sessions regarding the election going forward, but today's.
I agree with everything what you said, let's just wait till it settles out.
Okay.
And do what we have to do.
Thank you. Um, one thing I just wanna say quickly before public comment, uh, thank you, Mr. Robertson, for your service to Lutheran County in the short time that you were here. Um, and also, I feel like congratulations to Mr. Swett, is the wrong word, so maybe I'll just say like game on, I think.
Good luck.
Would be more fitting, good luck. For sure, so now we have public comment, I have one foot here, David Steller.
Thank you, um, yeah, I'm David Steller from Humlock Township. We were one of those areas that were really badly affected. I'd like to make a couple of suggestions, first on the manager. The first and primary responsibility for the new manager should be taking care of this mess. When you look at an article that appeared in the Citizens Voice back in August, it clearly also identified that there were lots of problems, I heard it on Monday night when I was here from one of the commissioners, or, excuse me, council members, and also the controller, that this whole place is a fiasco, you fight with each other, you don't seem to be able to communicate. I'm not sure whether Randy deserves what's happened, but clearly at this point, you have a problem. You might consider going back, give me what was in the article, going back to reviewing your charter and figuring out where the problems are, because it seemed to be based on comments, the problems are all over the place. So either you get the charter fixed, so that everybody can communicate who's in charge of what, as I heard that with the election board, they didn't know who was in charge, they didn't know who was responsible. Finally, I heard comments made that night that said, they're underpaid. Well, maybe you consider offering them bonuses or something, I don't know what kind of contract issues you have, whatever, but say, okay, you get the election right, we'll give you a bonus. But that, we've had nothing but trouble for years now, it didn't start just the other day, it started for month, or for years. We've had problems, ballot's not right, the instruction's not correct, I mean, this has gone on and on. And finally, I'd like to know where the votes are for Humlock, we're missing about five hundred votes. When I was here on Monday, I said four hundred, but I now realize it's five hundred. We voted with provisional ballots, that's the only thing we had, they ran out of paper. By the way, they notified the Election Bureau at seven in the morning, I've had that confirmed by the poll workers. And also, I've heard a couple of comments about the poll workers being trained, they did an outstanding job, they deserve medals. They deserve more money than they're ever gonna get for this, for the hassle they went through. And so, I think you need to, you know, figure out what happened obviously, but this needs to be fixed for the next election. And I'd like to know where our votes are, because by eleven thirty, I happen to run into this, I voted on a provisional ballot, not following the process of provisional ballots, where you put it in envelope and then secured it, put it in the second envelope, put your information on it. That's not what we did, that was our votes, that was the only thing we had, it ran out of the, um, the machine ballots, and they had run out of the emergency ballots. So we're missing five hundred votes in Humlock Township.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Any other members in the public?
Ms. Rattle, thank you, Jason Carrigan, Salishburg, Pennsylvania. Uh, Mr. Brian Thornton, uh, thank you for your comments, but just remember, you voted for Mr. Robertson. So you're part of the cause of, of why we're, we're sitting here tonight. Absolutely, so, uh, you know, we, we need, we need leadership on this council to make the right decisions, to stop playing politics with every position that gets hired. Every person, uh, obviously, Ms., in my opinion, Ms. Gilbert McBride was a political hire to keep it in, in the democratic zone, and, and look what's happened, it, it's an absolute disgrace. And when you asked for a raise of hands, I, I didn't see Ms. Rattle's hand go up, so I'm not sure. I know she's very good friends with Ms. McBride, but I'm, I'm not sure where she stands, maybe she can let us, let the entire county know where she stands with Ms. McBride. But hopefully by the end of the month, uh, Beth is gone from county employment. My aunt, two years ago, asked for a, uh, a ballot to be mailed to her house. She has multiple sclerosis, she cannot walk, it's very difficult for her to walk, she never received it. Couldn't vote, she had to go in two years ago and go in and vote provisionally, okay? Last week, she almost had to be carried in by her husband to go vote because she didn't trust the process in Lutheran County for a ballot to be mailed to her. So she went in to vote, and she was handed a blank piece of paper and said, fill out your candidates. How does this happen in Lutheran County? I have voted for fourteen years in Monroe County, and there has never been an issue. And everyone sits here sanctimonious, oh, wasn't me, I didn't vote for him. Oh, let's wait, they're trying, the oligarchy that runs this county is trying to change the narrative and blame the provider of the machines on the, the paper to try to save Ms. Gilbert McBride. It's up to you people to do your job and fire her. Stop the nonsense. And lastly, I ask this council tonight to raise your hands again not to raise taxes on, on the people of Lutheran County. We know that Mr. Swett, who was just appointed, believes in raising taxes one percent a year. You just appointed him, him and Ms. Crocamo, right? Last year, wanted to raise our taxes. Let's make sure you help Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Run a successful budget with no tax increase. Thank you, Ms. Rattle, where do you stand? In regard to Ms. Gilbert. Thank you.
Any other members in the public? Then I have up here, I'm gonna read this email, and then Mr. Urban and Mr. Robertson both want to make a comment, really quickly. Um, this is from Brian Dugess, my name is Brian Dugess, and I'm from Orleans, Pennsylvania. I'm writing to you because I'm concerned about the election process in Lutheran County, as a volunteer poll worker and ballot transposer in the recent elections, I've seen first, at first hand how important it is to have fully trained and adequately staffed voting sites. The future of our country depends upon the ability of every citizen to have free and unhindered access to the voting process. This includes accessible drop boxes, efficient dissemination of information, and the thorough training of election personnel. In order to do this effectively, it is essential to have a full, fully funded and staffed Election Bureau. I strongly urge you to dedicate the county resources necessary to make Lutheran County voting process a positive example for others. Mr. Urban?
I mean, regretfully, you know, I supported Mr. Robertson prior to him coming into the county, I mean, I think none of this was political. We did go through a fair and honest process, uh, he wasn't outsider, nobody, Mr. Robertson before coming into this town. You know, sometimes people interview well, they have a good resume, and obviously, there, there was a search committee with professionals on it that put forth his name to other people. And quite honestly, uh, you know, it, it sort of, it's, it's, it's not a nice thing to do, to have to terminate somebody or to accept the resignation because there was an election fiasco. Part of being a manager is also listening to the board that, that are your bosses in a sense, and what had transpired over the election is reprehensible. Uh, I think you have, you have a civil process and you have a criminal process. Uh, I don't think it should all be on the DA, because all he's gonna look at is criminal. There were recommendations of the past that did not appear to be ever followed by the previous election, uh, interior, uh, election inquiry committee from this council. Uh, I will probably be proposing that we create a resolution to take about a hundred thousand dollars to hire some outside election attorneys to look at our charter, to look at the admin code, to look at Title fifty-three, Title twenty-five, how they all correlate with one another. Because there is a difference of opinion with our internal office a lot on interpretation of who does what. And honestly, there shouldn't be, I mean, the language is pretty clear, I've written an email the other day, which I forward to the press once again to the election board, once again to county council, once again to leadership of the county, you know, uh, uh, even getting down to taking over the office. It's pretty clear that any order could do that. You know, I don't see why the press doesn't ask any questions of any of the other attorneys that are independently in this county right now, looking at our elections, for both the Democratic and Republican side. I know there's a disagreement with, in one of our county solicitors versus the Democratic attorney that's, that's looking over the election right now on the interpretation of, um, how you swear somebody, you know, you don't need a judge to come downstairs and take time out of his or her day to swear an individual's name. It's a, a judicial process, you look at the laws, the election board is a quasi-judicial body, there's, I mean, I've immersed myself in it, I suggest other people do the same, the language is very plain, it's very easy to read. It shows the powers and duties of what the election board does. I, I suggest the press really dig into the matter and, and, and not shut us out either, because there are people speaking about it. You know, and, and boards of elections are, are one out of every four years in all the commission forms of government, there's sixty, probably sixty counties that have three commissioners. And the year they run, they cannot serve on their board of elections. President, you should go to, you know, appoints three different individuals to lead that board of elections, and those counties can run just fine, the normal people, because they have processes in place, those people that are conveyed that power have all the assumed powers under the law. And here, for some reason, this charter gets in the way, and, and our admin code, and it steps on people's toes. You know, there's, there's a clear provision in there that I'd like to get removed, because the division of admin services cannot be the clerk, because we said it, so it's Title twenty-five says they can choose their own clerk, so what happens if we pick their clerk by ordinance, they pick a clerk by law? Now you have conflict with two clerks, and who's gonna sign the official documents that go down to the Department of State? So look at parts of the law, and you will see there's direct conflict, I wanna clear those conflicts, so, so I think, you know, maybe we set aside a hundred thousand dollars taken out of the grant that we just received, get an outside source or two, maybe have one Democratic attorney, one Republican attorney that's experienced in the election law, and to really give us a report on what we can do better here. It was a travesty, I, I phone ringing first thing in the morning like others, and I hope we never experience this again. And unfortunately, the bug had to stop with Mr. Robertson, as he did hire the leadership, or, you know, his division has, or his division had may have hired the leadership of that department. It can't be, sort of, not always delegate everything out, have to make decisions for yourself as the manager. Unfortunately, this is sort of collateral.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I saw the charter requires that I give you an annual report, and I know, since I wasn't gonna be here for a year, I thought it would be, who view I'll address elections a little bit later.
No, the, the state of the, the state of the county needs to be advertised, that needs to be a public meeting, you cannot give a state of the county.
I'm not giving the state of the county, just the.
Right, just the way you said that it was required, it is required by the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, no, I, I recognize that, just.
Yeah, you could, you could make a statement if you'd like, but not.
Despite the environmental fiscal challenges we've had, we filled three division chiefs.
That's roughly 40% of the division chiefs in the last four or five months. Poised to save about $400,000 in human services. You've been briefed a couple of times in the consolidation, facility consolidation. So rather than paying rent, we can put it in our programs, our people and trade. One we haven't talked any about, I think, is Ms. Hill and I had met with the leadership of the Veterans Veterans Hospital. And there's a possibility we could co-locate an office, which is now out in 44, which is woefully inadequate for the veterans. You go out there and you have to make a trip. Why not at the hub and the Veterans Affairs who said, there's a possibility within the next few months, we can carve out a space for you to have an onsite presence. I think it would significantly enhance our ability to serve up to 30,000 people. As you've been told, for the first time you saw the document, first time in years, the state has said there's been some light, some slight improvements in child and youth service. Put it in their report this last time. First time in several years from the issues that were here. Also seeing the first positive improvements in hiring, as you were briefed just the other night. I think we're somewhere in the mid 40s compared to the 60s we were just a few months ago. Per, I think it was your charter, getting with Senator Casey, got with his chief of staff, deputy chief of staff, and sent Representative Cartwright on the UDAC money. And it's good momentum, no promises, but they're interfacing for us to get that money released. I believe it's five or six million dollars. We started a professional reading program for our senior leaders, and I've invited you all to a session of a world-class guy, senior leader development trainer for Home Depot throughout the world. Also partnered with Discover Northeast Pennsylvania and got several thousand dollars worth of artwork or more, about 15 pieces at Penn Place for free. I don't know if you've been in there recently, the lobby, but seen some of the things they've done. The sheriff has exported his Defense Reutilization Management Program, which provides billions of dollars. I think he's captured close to a million and a half dollars of free property equipment to the entire staff, logged them in, so, and has trained them on how we can do that so we don't have to buy it. You know of the tremendous improvements we've made in IT management, just this week. We discussed with our insurance company how we can use that to lower our cyber possibly insurance policies and our exposure. By title, I've heard the budget mentioned a couple of times the last month. Mr. Swett, we heard it tonight, will inherit the budget. The budget is entitled, "The Manager's Budget," when he presents it, or she presents it to you. Then after that, it's your show. What I tried to do is express to you what I saw, because I was here two months when I got to start developing the budget. So I invited every one of you in for one-on-one sessions or one-on-two or whatever, with the leaders who developed the budgets. So they could tell you what you heard last, two nights ago from Mr. Greenwald, what you heard from the sheriff about 50% staffing that was less than two years, what you're going to hear from the DA next week, what you're going to hear from 911, what you're going to hear from roads and bridges, and 150-plus emails that you all have received, that I have received, about the status of roads and bridges. It takes resources. I can't think of anyone who's exposed more than myself from doing this in several communities. The last thing you want to do is raise taxes. But I don't know the way to cut ourselves out of this situation. This county has done a remarkable job in reducing the debt from 10 or 15 years ago. Kudos. But just today, with two of the senior leaders, including the DA, at what cost? What are we found ourselves in right now? Roads and bridges, DA's, district attorney, or the public offenders, et cetera. So I will leave that with you, is certainly, I don't want to be the face of proposing an increase in taxes. But you can't go five years and 18%, in my opinion, and have one time 18% inflation, one time a 3.5% and fix the roads that you need to fix, or fix the bridges, or pay the people what you want to do. Section 2.09 of the county charter, subsection B3, says that one of the principal missions of the county council is to exercise the power to, quote, levy, establish, alter, or abolish taxes. Staff doesn't generate the funds. That's your job. Your job is to resource the people that do the job. And you know that. I'm not trying to preach at you. There seems to be a lot of negativity that comes forward in these meetings about people who think it's my budget. I proposed it to you. You do whatever you wish. A couple of things as it relates to the election, which is an issue du jour. Couldn't agree with you all more. This is shameful. Shameful. There's about 114,000 ballots cast that we know of as I walked out the door. That represents a 4% increase from the last midterm. And it's about exactly the same statewide experience here in Pennsylvania right now. Overall turnout, according to what I was told, is somewhere between 55 and 56%, which is 4% higher than the last midterm. Those are the statistics. Of the 186, seven poll judges, 114 so far have answered questionnaires back and said they had little, no issues. Obviously, a lot did. And of the 114 that answered, only two said they had paper shortages and they resolved them through their own initiatives. We know of at least three places where a scanner broke, which has happened in every election, and therefore, the ballots got caught up in that. But I don't want to use that as any pretext whatsoever. This was done wrong. Unquestionably, issues regarding paper is out there, and it is exacerbated by others. On the morning of the election, at nine o'clock, 9:30 in the morning, the district attorney and I were talking about an investigation, because there have been enough people to get with him or me. Could this be an act of commission rather than omission? And I couldn't agree with you more, councilman. You need to take a deep dive in this, and it needs to be beyond, in my opinion, paper. It needs to be, how does a meltdown of a board member affect everything else that's going on? How does that happen? How do we get turnover of six to eight people, and God bless you, sir, into the vision in three years? Nobody will even touch these jobs. There's not been one qualified applicant. One qualified applicant in the last four months, as I understand. And the one that did apply has been fired from two different places. They don't want your jobs because you get treated like this. If there was a problem in this organizational structure for me, which there was, down to the administrative division chief, who's been here two and a half months, to the director of elections, who's in a vacant position, to the deputy director, who has been here four months, to the operations manager, who's been here one year, to the clerical staff, I hope the DA can find out where it was. But that's the organizational structure, and you can find it in the book. And if there was a mistake made down at the bowels of this, I hope Mr. Swett will take the appropriate action. I plan on taking the appropriate action, but I won't be here. But part of that is the systemic thing that you have preached two times since I've been here, Steve. How did we get to this point? How do we have this constant bickering between the board and the bureau? And I hope that you hire an outside, because that's not the DA's charter, to take a look at this. I have never been arrested. I've never been let out in handcuffs from a courthouse. I've never been charged with felonies, yet somehow, that seems to be one of the primary leaders in our county here. And why, for the love of God, that people listen to that, I have no idea. But he is an elected lead. How we get to the point that in two months in my in-brief, that two of the council says, Robertson, you got too many D's and not enough Rs. I couldn't be more apolitical than the driven snow.
I think, I think that's.
And that, the final note I had, and not on elections, is a week after I got here, I offered to resign. As you know, as Mr. Lombardo knows, as Mr. Schem knows, because of ethics, because of people who were sharing my emails, it's only gotten worse. And at that time, I told you, I told, I think in my interview, my mother had fallen down five steps. Since then, she's been diagnosed with Alzheimer's, just a couple of months ago. And since then, my wife has had major surgery that has went south. So if you think I'm resigning for any other reason other than care for my family, which is exactly what I put in the statement, you are mistaken. I don't leave a fight. I wish I could stay here, but I know I will never be allowed to do the job that I was hired to do and take care of my family.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
So God bless you. Good luck. And Ms. Rattle, God bless you. I know you tried real hard. I really mean that, Kendra, you and most of you, whether we agree or disagree, good luck. Thanks. And I'll be making more statements later.
Thank you. Mr. Swett, did you want to make a comment?
Sure, thanks, Ms. Rattle. So I just wanted to say something briefly. As most of you know, I've been here almost 10 years, humbled by the support of council. Appreciate it. Agree with Ms. Rattle, but I see this as an opportunity. You got to start somewhere. You want to be a GM of a sports team, you don't start off at the Yankees. That's how it works. So there's things to fix, and I see it as an opportunity. And my one statement is, my personal philosophy and the position of Loser County manager is that the position handles day-to-day items, while informing council on higher priority items, like division and department heads, whether permitted or lacking. And that's all I'm going to say today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rattle?
Yes.
Just want to comment a couple of things that Mr. Robertson said. Number one, Veterans Administration Office used to be in Water Street, close to the prison. You had to climb up a bunch of stairs and things to get to it. Remember, some changes in the structure. They wanted to go over to the 44 Airport, because it's easy to get into, there's parking, there's a traffic light right there, so you can get in and out. That was their choice. And I want that noted, because that wasn't something that, you know, was pushed upon you. Number two, now children and youth, we all know we've had issues over the years. But there was a period of time, not so long ago, that we had a full license. It's only recently again that we don't. So, you know, please, those are important points that we should at least acknowledge. Because, you know, it's like anything else, you can say anything you want, show me the action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rattle. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Settle.
All favor?
Fine.
Suggestions opposed? We need to adjourn.